Committee Board Meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, 2025 to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present remotely.
We see that. Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Assistant Park Superintendent Irene Morales. IT, A.J. Garcia, excuse me.
Present.
Neese Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel here.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel.
You're welcome.
We now have the election of officers, President and Secretary. We'll do the President first, pleasure of the Board.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to keep Rob Getzloff as the President of the Finance Committee for the year of 2025.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries.
Got to do roll call, Rob.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we have to do roll call. Mr. Troxel, roll call.
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. That is five zero. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to keep the Secretary as Mike Troxel for 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Approval of the minutes of February 14th, 2024, public meeting, pleasure of the Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion passed, five zero. There is no new business?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I do have some new business and...
And old business?
An old business and funny business. We got it all.
Get it off.
No funny business.
Finance Committee members, I've provided you five pages of some items here regarding the Board of Finance Committee this evening. And the first page is a listing about standing checks to be voided. Under IC 5-11-10.5, we're voiding outstanding checks that are two years old. These checks are from 2022 and have not been presented for payment. They are before you for your action. If approved, checks will be added back to the respective accounts that they were issued from. The total amount of checks to be voided this year is $22,408.04. So I would ask for action on that.
Okay, we need a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next item I have is report on property tax summary of collections. And these are pages 2A and 2B. Under our property tax collections for 2024, we collected $13,409,222.43, which represents 99.65% of collection rate on that. Under our collections for excise tax collections for 2024, we collected $778,415.65. This had a collection rate from what was estimated of 165.25%. We estimated based on what we normally get from the state, but they collected more and we received more on that. Under the collections for 2024 for commercial vehicle tax, we collected $50,682. That represents a total collection percentage amount of 94.16%. And under the redevelopment of property tax collections, there was a collection of $4,403,514.24 was collected from our redevelopment tax collection. So that's my report on property tax collections. I'll move into report on investments. It would be page three in your packet. In 2024, we earned for our investments $2,795,791.79. This is a little bit less than we collected last year, as you see from page three. It was a good year for collections. We will have some... Looking forward to this year, 2025, with the rates that have come down last year and possibly could come down this year. We're conservative on what our numbers may be for our collections. And we also have some of our assets rolling off, some of our ARPA money that is being spent that was invested, and also some TIF funds will be going out for some of our projects that we have going on. So that's my report on interest earned.
Pleasure of the Board.
Yeah, you can accept, I guess you can...
Motion to accept the report.
You can do that.
Motion to accept the report.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Under the report on debt service, page four, if you see there, our principal and interest debt was paid on long-term debt service for 2024 was $4,708,577.26. On page five, our principal and interest paid on leases totaled $930,516.59. Our total debt servicing that we had for 2024 was $5,718,93.84. The outstanding debt for both long-term and leases ending this year was $22,360,637.24. If you'd like to make a motion accepting that one?
Yes.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Johnson?
Roll call.
Okay, hold on.
Yes.
Keep forgetting about that.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries five zero.
That's all I have to report, Mr. President. If there's any questions regarding the finances, I'd be happy to answer any.
Finance members, any questions?
No.
No questions.
Thank you.
Do we need to open it up to the floor?
You don't need to.
Okay, at this time, we'll adjourn our meeting. The finance meeting will move on now to the Water Works Board.
I'd like to call to order the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, at 6:39 PM. We've already done the pledge of allegiance. The roll call for this board includes Tom Schmidt, Kevin Conley, and myself, Robin Arvenitis. First on the agenda, we have the minutes of the January 15th, 2025, public meeting.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say... Whoop, I'm sorry, we need a roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm not in this meeting.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims for the Water Works Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero regarding claims. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any staff reports regarding the Water Works Board meeting? Any staff reports?
No reports.
Are there any council reports regarding the Water Works Board meeting?
No, ma'am.
No.
No reports. There is no old business, but we do have new business. Item A, consider the engagement letter between the London Witty Group and the town of Shererville for a water rate study. Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Madam President. Yeah, this engagement letter is similar to the one that was, we did back in 2020 with London Witty Group regarding our water rate study. The amount is $30,000, and that's the same amount that was in 2020 for this water rate study.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Roll call vote would be Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Water Works Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Is it appropriate for me to conduct the Stormwater Board remotely?
You may.
Okay, then I will call to order the Stormwater Board meeting for February 12th, 2025, at 6:41 PM. The roll call is different. It is myself as President, Tom Schmidt as Vice President, Robin Arvenitis also member, just the three of us. The first agenda item is the minutes of the January 15th public meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Troxel, will you do a roll call?
Mr. Conley?
It's Caleb, Tom, and Robin, Mike.
Oh, Caleb, Tom. Okay, then Tom and Robin. Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. Second agenda item, number three actually, is claims. There are no claims.
Chairman, I want to make certain that everybody participates. This is the Stormboard. All five members are up here, not three.
I thought it was only three members on the Stormboard.
No, sir. Not to my knowledge.
Yes.
There's three.
Yeah, I thought there was only three.
Is there?
Just wanted to make that note.
Well, I think we need to know. My listing only showed three members, myself, Tom Schmidt, and Robin Arvenitis.
That's the way you should do it tonight, then. We'll verify the membership for the next meeting.
Thank you, David. Next agenda item is claims. There are no claims, so we'll move on to reports. Are there any staff member reports for the Stormwater Board?
No reports, Mr. President.
Are there any council member reports for the Stormwater Board?
None.
There are no listings for old business. There are no agenda items for new business. Is there any business from the floor related to the Stormwater Board? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, 2025. The time is 6:44 PM. The Redevelopment Commission is comprised of the entire town council. Okay, minutes of the January 15th, 2025, public meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes. Passes five zero. Claims, I understand there's a correction on claim G, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. President. Claim G, those funds for the Indiana National Resource Department, Kennedy Avenue Phase Two, should read $260,690 even. And if you need any more additional explanation, Director of Operations Andy Hansen would be happy to share that.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure of the Board. So moved?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Yes, it's five zero. Okay, reports. Any reports from staff? Twenty-two of us perhaps?
Yes, Mr. President. We did receive, we've been waiting for the second appraisal on that property so we can rebid it, send the RFPs out, and we got that early this week, so we'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks.
So if that goes out the end of this month, how much time are we allowing for responses?
I think it was 10 days, wasn't it? Thirty days?
Six to eight weeks.
Oh, six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any reports from council members on redevelopment?
No.
Okay. We have no old business. We have an item under new business, consider engagement letters between London Witty and the town of Shererville for municipal advisory services. Is that Mr. Troxel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is an engagement letter from London Witty Group, as you just described, for municipal advisory services. These services they're looking at providing is, as we move forward with any type of financing of a public safety building for the fire department, their services would be needed to produce all of the appropriate financing documents related to accounting for that project. Their dollar amount here for this is $35,000. For reference, back in 2020, there was a refinancing of some of our bonds, and it was a $30,000 engagement letter at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Pleasure of the Board?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes. Okay, that's it for new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call a Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, at 6:47 PM. The roll call for the Utility Board stays the same as the redevelopment, which includes all five council. The first item on the agenda is the minutes from the January 15th public meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item is claims. Any additional claims for Utility Board, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Any reports from staff? Mr. Gorman, any reports on utilities?
No reports, Mr. President.
Mr. Simstad, our Town Engineer, any report on utilities?
No reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any reports from council members?
No.
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 No, no reports. We have no old business. We have no new business. At this time, I'll take business from the floor regarding utilities. Is there any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business from the floor. This meeting is adjourned. We'll move right into the Town Council meeting.
I'd like to call the Town Council meeting at 6:48 this evening on February 12th, 2025. The roll calls stay the same as the utilities, so we will go to the minutes of the January 15th, 2025, and January 30th, 2025, public meetings. Pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, there are, Mr. President. You can list on your agenda item there for claims, item Q, and this is a claim to Bison Aerial Equipment LLC, and this is for the purchase of a used aerial bucket truck. And that value, or that cost for that is $70,240, and these would be coming out of various funds, both the solid waste funds and the cable TV funds. And if you need any additional explanation, Mr. Nandorf's here to share that.
Thank you. Pleasure of the Board?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Chad, does, do we have more than one bucket truck?
No, we have one bucket truck right now. It is a 1994 GMC. We've been looking at this for the last five years to possibly replace this. We found this used bucket truck up in Illinois, northwest of Chicago. Went out there, listened to the engine run, tested it out. Hydraulics are solid. It's a good truck for its age, and I think it'd be an asset to not only Public Works but to the town as well.
Thank you, Chad.
You're welcome.
Move to approve claims, Mr. Getzloff?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. We'll do the roll call on staff reports, Jim.
Sure, Mr. President. Chief Patterson, any reports?
Just like to report for the month of January, the fire department responded to 303 EMS calls, 74 fire-related calls, for a total of 377 calls for the month of January. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief Meyer?
Nothing to report.
Police Chief Sormas?
Yeah, just one item to report. Next month, on March 13th, the Shererville McDonald's is hosting our Coffee with the Cop, and that's going to be between 9:00 AM and 11:00 PM, 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM in the morning there, so this is a good opportunity that brings our officers with our community so they can sit down and just have some conversation. And individuals that are coming there can enjoy a free cup of iced coffee or hot coffee on McDonald's. So I hope everyone that's available can stop by and attend and meet some of our officers while we're there. So that's March 13th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Shererville McDonald's, 1855 US Highway 41, just south of US 30 and 41.
Thank you, Chief.
That's all I have.
Deputy Chief McNamara?
No reports.
Assistant Superintendent Ms. Morales?
Nothing to report.
Town Engineer Simstad?
No reports, Mr. Gorman.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf?
Nothing to report.
Andrew Hansen, Director of Operations?
No reports.
No reports.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any reports from council members?
No reports.
All right. At this time, I will take any public comments regarding the agenda from the public. Any comments?
Jeff Menard, 1279 Poppy Field. Glad to see everybody made okay in the snow. But I was coming up here just to talk about the Family Express, the zoning board variance discussed, so I just wanted to say some, I know there's a lot of concerns about traffic the town has and businesses in that area, but I just wanted to speak to some of the positive things with that Family Express. They're a very high-quality gas station. I think it would help give some competition to some of the gas stations in Shererville that are rundown with having something of high quality there to try to keep up with. Another couple of positive things I see is family running on the, riding on the Penn C Trail can come in there. The Family Express has a nice indoor seating area, a quick-serve restaurant where they make meals right then, and then an outside eating area, so I see some benefits to that.
All right, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments regarding the agenda items? State your name and your address, sir, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jeff Podgorny. I'm a property owner here in Shererville. It's 7512 Fawn Valley Drive. I'm also a business owner at 2342 Klein Avenue, and I'm here to comment, the same as Mr. Menard, on the Family Express. And just want to read a brief statement if I could, just so I don't omit anything. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the proposed business of this location. Specifically, I support the unanimous and unfavorable recommendation made a couple of weeks ago by the Board of Zoning Appeals on January 27th. I have two main concerns that align with those raised by the Board. First, there are already a significant number of businesses in the overlay corridor between Austin Avenue and Klein Avenue, and I believe adding another really wouldn't be beneficial for the area. The second and more importantly concern is with the issue of traffic. The north-south flow on Klein Avenue is already problematic. I'm worried that other businesses of this type at this particular location are going to worsen the situation. Additionally, the upcoming Kennedy Avenue project, we can expect a significant increase in north-south traffic, further stressing an already congested Klein Avenue. So for these reasons, I strongly support the Board of Zoning Appeals' recommendation and urge you, the council, to consider these when you make your decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else regarding public comment on the agenda tonight? Please state your name and your address.
Jennifer Podgorny at 7512 Fawn Valley Drive in Shererville.
Excuse me, ma'am. Can you speak directly into the mic, please? We're taping this.
Yes, Jennifer Podgorny at 7512 Fawn Valley Drive in Shererville. I'm also here to discuss new business, item G, about the Family Express going in. I'd like the Town Council to support the Board of Zoning Appeals' unanimously unfavorable recommendation for the overlay district. As a business owner of two businesses in Shererville at 2342 Klein Avenue and 7512 Fawn Valley Drive, a homeowner and living in both subdivisions off of Klein Avenue and Newcastle Estates and Fawn Valley, over the last 18 years, this location cannot handle any more traffic. We are two lanes there, one lane each way. During rush hour, it is so hard to get out of the subdivisions and the businesses on the south side of Klein Avenue. Traffic is always backed up during school hours and rush hours. Sometimes it takes 15 Sometimes it takes 15 to 20 minutes to get out of the parking lot where the Family Express wants to go in. According, I did some research, according to the gas station data, an average convenience store selling fuel has around 1,100 customers per day going through their station. Von Tobles that was there never had that amount of traffic. Imagine that traffic going through the gas station convenience stores during the day and causing more difficulty there. Two years ago, my husband was rear-ended going into our business there due to the traffic. Now they also want a car wash there. According to data from Heron Gas Station, a gas station with car washes in Indiana can expect an average daily traffic around 130 to 160 cars. On top of the 1,100 cars in Indiana is the average gas stations going in. So you're thinking it's going to be around 1,300 to 1,500. Yes, it's dependent on location. And that is a busy intersection between Klein Avenue and Route 30. Convenience stores, according to NACS Advancing Convenience and Fuel Retailing in September of 2024, monthly convenience store visits have been consistently elevated year over year. The average dwelling time of a customer in a convenience store is 17.2 minutes in the state of Indiana, meaning every 17.2 minutes on average, we are going to have heavy traffic in and out of that location on a two-lane road. We already have two gas stations on that corner. You're not supposed to make a left-hand turn out of the loop gas station on Klein Avenue. If you sent the police department sitting there, you would see that so many people ignore the no-left-hand turn in cross-traffic. It is a very dangerous intersection. Good coffee drives foot traffic also to the convenience store and gas stations. Family Express is known for their good coffee like Java Wave. Increased traffic of 16.67% at a gas station during the business hours of 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m., which is going to also cover now morning traffic is going to be backed up on Klein Avenue. We have a liquor store, a bar, a 24-hour gym in that whole strip mall, plus the dance studio. That parking lot is a nightmare. We've now put Jody's Italian or Jody's Cheese Stakes in there. If you sit there and watch the traffic and almost all the accidents. Yes, I know Mr. Menard thinks it's a great place for pedestrians, the bicyclists from truck and fleet to go through there, but it's also going to be a pedestrian nightmare. I've spoken with gas station owners that I insure. I insure about 30 gas stations in the local area. And so I've spoken to owners since the last two weeks. And most stations are the busiest in the morning when people go to work, in hours when people get off of work, so all during rush hour. And since Family Express is known for their great food and bakery, their lunch hour traffic is going to be very heavy as well. So currently, with an additional gas station convenience store, if you give the zoning overlay and their commercial development and their retail development behind it doesn't work out, how do you know they're not going to put in a tire station because they got the zoning approval or an auto service station? They're claiming that they have interest from medical facility going there. And I believe they said they were going to add an additional 113 parking spaces. If those businesses go in there, that's another 113 cars. If it's retail employees, hospital staff, medical staff that are going in and out of there at rush hour. Shererville on every corner has a gas station along Route 30. Two stoplights east on Route 30, you have the BP gas station. You go one stoplight west from Klein Avenue, you have the Speedway and the Circle K. Plus, we have the Dollar-
Excuse me, ma'am. You know, there is a three-minute limit, and I was kind enough to give you four, four minutes. So if you want to wrap it up-
I'm going to wrap it up. I'm right at the end.
That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we have the convenience store Dollar General across from there. If we bring another place in, there's competition for the gas stations and the convenience stores. You're likely to put other businesses out of sale, which you're going to have empty buildings in their prior business owners. The infrastructure is not set up there. It's a better location maybe down where you wanted to put the, at the speed, at the, you guys want to put this business, this commercial development down by the Indiana Speedway. But Shererville can do better than a gas station and convenience store on every corner. I'm asking the town council to reject this approval for an auto service station and reject the family market coming in. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Agenda items?
Kevin Dean, 1905, Sir Richard Road.
Okay.
I want to address this Family Express idea. I'm a new resident in Shererville. I moved here two and a half years ago. In the process of trying to find someplace to move to, I looked around the communities in the area. I was thinking about moving to Munster, and I avoided Munster because of the area at Ridge Road and Indianapolis Boulevard that's got a big shopping center with a bunch of vacant places in it. What I'm hearing today is that there is interest in moving businesses into Shererville, probably because we have such a good infrastructure. Our roads are great. Our environment is great. The people in the area seem to partake of the services that are available to them from local businesses. And I think it's fantastic that this Family Express is looking to move into Shererville and open up a business. The concerns this lady just addressed about the roads can be addressed by extending out or causing the Family Express to have to put a turn lane or merge lanes in. It seems like they're going to be buying a lot of property. But personally, I think it's a great idea because I love to see businesses moving into Shererville and not moving out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mike Wodarski, 1767 Goberd Drive. And I can see some development there, but I think the gas station is just too big for that area. Ever since the 50s, that's been a lumberyard. There hasn't been much traffic. But then there's been development and development over there. And the previous councils were derelict in their duty for Klein Avenue to still be a two-lane road. Heck, there's times when in the southbound, it's backed all the way to the cemetery. And the other way is backed all the way up to the school. And the traffic light over there is, for going north and south, isn't as long as it is on 30. So that traffic really doesn't move, and it sits and it sits and it sits there. I was there the other night coming out of that way. I was trying to go southbound on Klein, and traffic was just coming and coming and coming. I had to wait almost two minutes to get out of there. But then you want to talk about gas stations. In a four-mile length on Route 30, there's seven gas stations. Do we really need an eighth one? And on 41, within a half mile, we have three. I mean, put something more productive for the community and whatever than that. But I'm just saying the traffic over there is horrendous. And, you know, I don't know. Like I said, my belief is that the prior councils were derelict in not doing anything for the road infrastructure of this community, especially that area. You want to put stuff up, build stuff up, do something, widen the roads. That's the biggest problem over there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else comments on tonight's agenda? All right, I don't see anybody. We'll now close the floor. Okay, on your old business, confirmation of the purchase of Perpetual Easement in the amount of $17,300. Located at 701 Kennedy Avenue from the Canadian National Railroad and to authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize execution of documents. This is from the January 30, 2025 meeting Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Andy?
Yes, this is just for clarification. At the last council meeting, you approved us with a contingency amount in there, but it actually turned out to be the amount originally anticipated. So just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay. Pleasure, the board?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. B, clarification of purchase amount for the following, 918 and 922 Kennedy Avenue from Dezenzic Living Trust, $125,196. 910 and 918 Kennedy Avenue from Dezenzic Holding, LLC, for $24,243. Amounts were transposed on January 30 at 2025 Town Council Agenda. Jim?
I'll defer to Mr. Hanson on this one as well, Rob.
Again, this is just for clarification. The amounts were transposed on the last agenda. I just wanted to clarify that. And then as well, Mr. Oshin wanted us to explain further. The amounts paid for these parcels were more than the actual appraisals. But given the items that needed to be relocated, other comparable properties that were provided by the property owner and to avoid condemnation, Mr. Oshin reviewed the legalities and provided us a letter of opinion stating that the sales transaction was justifiable.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Troxel, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Under new business, we have ordinance 2017, an ordinance amending town zoning ordinance number 2024 as amended, the same being, an ordinance classifying, regulating, and restricting the location, height, area, bulk, and use of buildings and structures, and the use of land in the town of Shererville for the said purposes dividing the town into districts and all matters related thereto. Planning Commission Case 25-2-4, petitioner Lincoln Properties, LLC, represented by the town of Shererville, Jim M. Gorman, Town Manager. Location is 6909 West Lincoln Highway. Rezone from highway commercial and residential to all highway commercial planning. Commission favorable recommendation six zero. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. That parcel in ordinance 2017 is up on the screen right now. And the next four items, A, B, C, and D on the agenda are kind of related to the same area. So I'll kind of cover my explanation on all four in this one. So the, this parcel right here, we bought, the town of Shererville bought, it's a very deep parcel. It's about 1,500 feet deep. So the town of Shererville, as part of the Iliana Project, which is on this side, we bought the back 900 feet, and that was zoned as R1. We're going to rezone that later on in the agenda here to institutional if it's approved. And the front of it, by ordinance, anything along Route 30 is zone C3 to 350 feet. So what we're left with was this little piece in the middle, which was still R1. So what we're doing with this ordinance is combining the C3 and the R1 and making it all C3. We're doing that here. We're doing that here on the CSK property. And then the last two items on the agenda under these four are, the bottom parcels are going to be rezoned from R1 to institutional, which will match the zoning for Iliana right next to it. I hope that explains everything. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Pleasure, the board?
Move to approve.
You have a motion? I think we're adopting.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we're adopting tonight? I move to adopt.
Second. A motion to adopt and a motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Ordinance on B, ordinance 2018, an ordinance amending town zoning ordinance number 2004 as amended, the same being, an ordinance classifying, regulating, and restricting the location, height, area, bulk, and use of buildings and the structures and the use of land in the town of Shererville. And for the said purposes dividing the town into districts and all matters related thereto. Like Mr. Gorman said, this was, all spoke about just recently here. This comes from the Planning Commission Case 25-2-5. Petitioners, the town of Shererville, James N. Gorman, Town Manager. Location is 6909 West Lincoln Highway, south 900 feet. Rezone from the residential to institutional. Planning Commission favorable recommendation was six zero. We need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. President? I'll do roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
On this item here, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you. On C, ordinance 2019, is an ordinance amending town zoning ordinance number 2004 as amended, the same being, an ordinance classifying, regulating, and restricting the location, height, area, bulk, and use of buildings and structures, and the use of land in the town of Shererville and for the said purposes dividing the town into districts and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman explained all this when we got to part A. This is brought to us to the Planning Commission Case 25-2-2. Petitioners are CSK Properties, LLC, represented by the town of Shererville, James N. Gorman, Town Manager. Location is 6919 West Lincoln Highway. Rezone from highway commercial and residential to all highway commercial. Planning Commission favorable recommendation six, six zero. Need a motion to adopt?
So, second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Under new business D, ordinance 2020, an ordinance amending town zoning ordinance number 2004 as amended, the same being, an ordinance classifying, regulating, and restricting the location, the height, area, the bulk, and use of buildings and structures, and the use of land in the town of Shererville and the said purposes dividing the town into district and all matters related thereto. Once again, this was explained to us earlier on on A, part A. This is brought to you by the Planning Commission Case 25-2-3. Petitioner, town of Shererville, James M. Gorman, Town Manager. Location, 6919 West Lincoln Highway, south 900 feet. Rezone from residential to institutional. Planning Commission favorable recommendation six zero. Looking for an adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. We now have a public hearing. Mr. Oshin, are the proofs of publication all in order?
I refer that to your clerk treasurer.
Or Mr. Troxel?
Yes, they are in order.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorman, do you want to start with the opening remarks?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Each spring, the Lake County Community Economic Development Department applies to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for new funding through Community Development Block Program, the CDBG. One of the application requirements is to hold a public hearing in the communities where CDBG funding is allocated in order to obtain input from the local citizens on the proposed use of the new funding. For fiscal year 2025, the town of Shererville's CDBG allocation is approximately $124,885. The most common use of the CDBG funds is for infrastructure, including street reconstruction, sanitary sewers, waterline extensions, storm drainage improvement, sidewalks, and projects to remove architectural barriers, handicapped access such as curb cuts and wheelchair ramps. CDBG funds may also be used to eliminate slums and blight through demolition of unsafe buildings and other clearance activities. CDBG-funded infrastructure projects may only be done in areas where the neighborhood is at least 42% low to modest income according to HUD guidelines, guidelines, excuse me. In most cases, an income survey must be done to qualify the area for funding eligibility. The income information taken by the survey is strictly confidential and is used solely for the purpose of determining the area's eligibility for CDBG funding. Handicapped access projects and demolition may be done anywhere in the community without the need for area income determinations. The public hearing is just the start of the application process for Lake County. There are a series of legal advertisements and comment periods that take place during the summer prior to the final grant approval from HUD in late August. New CDBG funding is released to the county and its entitlement communities on or around September 1 and needs to be expended to June 15 of the following year. After public comment tonight, three documents need to be read and adopted. Affirmative action program, Section 3 understanding and resolution authorizing the- Affirmative Action Program, Section Three Understanding and Resolution authorizing the town executive to submit a project proposal for CDBG funding. Finally, project applications and supporting documentation needs to be submitted no later than May fifth, twenty twenty-five for review by Lake County. That's it, Mr. Getzloff. The floor is open now.
At this time, we open the floor for comments regarding the CDBG public hearing tonight. Any comments from the floor?
Jeff Menard, twelve seventy-nine Poppy Field. Could any of these funds be used for, uh, connections to the trails and stuff like that?
Pardon me?
Neighborhoods? Could some of that funds be used? Because we have great trails in Shererville. Oftentimes, we'll have great connectivity from neighborhoods.
It could be, but I think this one is going to be for one of our parks. We used it to improve our parks the last, you know, eight or ten years, so. This one's already spoken for. But, yeah, it could be.
Okay. Another item to think about, I have a, a friend of mine, happens to be blind, but we walk the trails quite often, and it'd be nice to add some kind of indications when you come up on an intersection or rail tracks that he can feel with his cane, just something to think about in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor? Hearing or saying none, this, the floor is now closed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd also like to enter into the meeting minutes the, uh, Citizen Participation Plan as well as the, uh, Section Three Understanding. Thank you.
All right. Pleasure of the board?
That would be on the resolution, Mr. Getzloff.
Oh, I'm sorry. The next one, right here. No? Oh, resolu- okay, I'm sorry, lost my spot. Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one is a resolution authorizing and directing the Town Council President of the town of Shererville to submit a project proposal for the Community Development Block Grant Funds for federal fiscal year twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Do you consider adding to that motion direction to the Recording Secretary to incorporate verbatim the opening comments of Mr. Gorman and the content of Section Three and the Lake County Citizen Participation?
All right, amend your moments, yeah?
For the record.
Okay. Who, who made the motion? I'm sorry, you did? You amended?
Yes. Um, so, amending my motion to, my motion to include, was it the Citizen Participation Plan?
Yes.
And the Section Three Housing and Urban Development document?
Yes.
Is there anything else? The...
The opening remarks.
The opening remarks as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. And who second?
I'll, I'll second that again.
Okay. All right, very good. We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Under new business F is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two is a resolution to transfer funds within the category of appropriations. Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. President, um, some of this action was done back in December. This was a movement of money to our rainy day fund, a four hundred thousand dollars, and one of the things, uh, it didn't get put on the transfer resolution at that time in December, so this is a cleanup of that. So, it's coming from the General Administration, uh, um, four fifty-one to one hundred line item for that transfer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Troxel. Pleasure of the board?
So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Troxel, roll call?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Uh, under new business G is to consider the variance of use to allow the operation of an automotive service station within U.S. Thirty Commercial Corridor Overlay District, which shall also include a retail development center. Board of Zoning Case Number twenty-five dash one dash one, petitioner is Family Express Corpora- Corporation, being represented by Weezer and Wiley LLP, location is seven fifty-one Lincoln Highway, Edition Lot Three. BZA unfavorable recommendation five zero on the January twenty-seven, twenty fi- uh, twenty twenty-five meeting. Uh, Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Getzloff. This is a proposed Family Express located on the southwest corner of U.S. Thirty and Klein Avenue. It's the old Von Tobles Building, uh, to allow an automotive service station within the U.S. Thirty Commercial Corridor Overlay District. The, uh, I believe the petitioner and his attorney are here tonight to represent. If you guys have any questions.
Jim, you want to come up with, uh, with the petitioner and, or if you just want to come up, whatever?
I'll just come up for, for now, I'll just come up.
All right.
Okay, that's, there you go.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the, uh, Town Council. My name's Jim Weezer. Um, I'm an attorney here in Shererville with offices at four twenty-nine West Lincoln Highway, and I, uh, have the pleasure of representing, uh, Family Express. I have with me two representatives of Family Express. I have Pete Andreu, who's with me, who does a lot of their work and their architectural work, and I also am pleased to have with us the founder and owner of Family Express, Gus Olympus. I was, I think I'll stay basically with the order in which I was going to make my comments, although unfortunately, I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about the public comments that were made, and not wanting to get overly legalistic, but it, it's pretty, it's pretty hard to a- avoid doing that in this particular circumstance. The public hearing is conducted at the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's, it's not conducted at the, at the county, or at the Town Council. It's conducted down there. If people have information, if they have evidence, if they have documents, whatever they may have, they have to bring it to the Board of Zoning Appeals. In this particular case, I, I understand people got up. Public comment is permitted by the Town Council. I get that, and, uh, and it's, uh, appropriate to allow the public to speak, uh, at your meetings. However, when there's been, already been a public hearing, and that's where the evidence is adduced, if they want to come up, as several other people did, and say, hey, we think this is a, w- we like this idea, or, no, we don't like this idea, I recognize that. But, in the case, for example, of Mrs. Podgorny, what she did was, uh, introduce evidence that was not introduced at the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, I, I want to make that clear to all of you that when you were hearing it for the first time, so were we. That was never introduced. There was no discussion about how many people use gas stations, how much traffic it creates, statistics from the state of Indiana, uh, things of that nature, simply wasn't introduced. All that was brought up at the, uh, at the, um, BZA was, um, several comments from, from folks, Mr. and Mrs. Podgorny being one, that said it's going to create too much traffic. That was it. No, nothing to back it up, no study, nothing that supported their assertions at that hearing. So, um, at least for purposes of, of, of this record, I, I don't, I don't believe it would be appropriate for, uh, this, um, body to consider her, her comments in that regard. Having said that, let me just try to do this as, as best and quickly as I can. We, we requested a use variance. When I say we, I mean Family Express Corporation, that is the, uh, purchaser of the property, requested a use variance, and why did they request a use variance? Because although the underlying zoning is appropriate for what they want to, what they want to do there, which is to build a convenience store, and the convenience store does have fuel pumps, we don't, we don't deny that, but the world's changing, folks, and they aren't the same as they used to be, and the emphasis isn't on that. And Family Express was the first, locally owned, locally developed, locally founded, to do that, to go, to get to brand name items that you can purchase and you can acquire in their convenience store. However, given the nature and the terms and conditions of your ordinance, although it was a permitted use in the underlying district, it is not a permitted use in your overlay district. You have, as you all know, you have the, the, uh, U.S. Thirty Commercial, um, Overlay District, as you do on forty-one. That's why we're here. But I point something out that I think is really critical in your consideration. As we pointed out at the BZA, um, only eighteen percent of the entire proposed development requires that use variance. The other eighty-two percent meets your requirements, both underlying and overlay district. The only, the only portion that does not is the convenience store and the pumps, which is only eighteen percent of the entire proposed project. That's point number one. And point number two, and, and let me just say, we're not here to rehash it either, and we're not here to bring in new evidence, and we're not going to do that. We simply think that in this particular instance, uh, your BZA, which is a, a great group, and, and some very skilled people that have been on it for years, just simply didn't see it our way, and we think they made a mistake. We just think they were wrong. We meet the statutory criteria of what a use variance requires, and we believe we should be entitled to that. But to get back again to what we're talking about, that's going to be developed there, and only eighteen percent requires the use variance, a lot of comments about traffic. Speculative comments mostly, but a lot of comments. Um, we know, and I, I get it, the public doesn't, doesn't really know, they, you know, the, the full process, but we also know that this is just the first step of the process. We're just looking for the designation. After that, we have to go to the Plan Commission. We have to submit at full engineering details on, on the use variance portion, and also on the other eighty-two percent, which is going to be high-end commercial and, and retail development that's going to benefit this community. And anything, well, let me put it this way. That property isn't going to sit unoccupied. It's a prime location, prime location in this community, and whatever goes in there is going to create traffic. So, making comments about traffic without having a baseline to determine it really doesn't mean a whole lot right now. Traffic study? Yeah, probably what the Plan Commission would require, obviously what we would do. Those things get done at the Plan Commission in the next phase, in the next step. We also have to get ultimate site plan approval. And all of those issues, well, that's about the only issue that was raised. No other issues were raised negatively at all. Um, those, uh, issues will be dealt with and fully vetted in the next stages of the process. So, the, the public has two more bites at the apple because those are public hearing, well, at least one more bite at the apple, because the, the, it's a public hearing on, on the subdivision development. So, they're going to have an opportunity again to speak to those issues that are relevant to that issue. This is a use variance. Are we, are we, uh, acting consistent with your comprehensive plan? Well, we are. It's just that the overlay district is in conflict with that. Um, I'd also point out, because I, I think it's important to think about this. Over the years, I've been, seen many dozens and dozens of traffic studies. Uh, either my clients have done traffic studies or communities have done traffic studies, and they have to take a lot of things into consideration. And one thing they have to take into consideration is, one, there's obviously traffic there already. I know Mike mentioned that it wasn't a lot of traffic, but it was heavy traffic. It was semis unloading lumber, picking up lumber, large delivery trucks doing the same thing. So, there's different types of traffic that are created, and that has to be taken into consideration. The other thing is this, Family Express, because of their reputation, uh, is obviously going to attract free enterprise, uh, business from competitors. And that traffic won't be additional traffic. It'll be traffic that's already there, it's just coming over here. Those things get taken into consideration. There's a lot that goes into that. But we're here solely to determine whether or not we should be entitled to a use variance. Then, if that's approved, then we get into the details of the actual development itself. It'll take a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of engineering, uh, and a lot of comments from a whole lot of people that will have that opportunity. So, in summation, we just believe that those were, um, issues that, for whatever reason, the BZA members that, that didn't pick up on, uh, didn't see. They, they just, uh, there was very little discussion, quite frankly, and it was just an, an unfavorable recommendation. We know that this council has the, um, depending on how you enjoy it or not, the honor of being, uh, the policymakers for this community and the leaders for this community, and to develop this community in an orderly, uh, fashion, and to allow this type of business at that location that's going to cre- that's, that's going to be an investment somewhere between twenty and twenty-five million dollars, with the jobs that it'll create, with the taxes that it will generate, we believe is an incredible, incredible asset to this community. And you have the opportunity to say, hey, you know, every, every once in a while, uh, the, a, a board will overlook something or not see it, or just, um, recommend something that, when you think of the whole of the town of Shererville, as you are obligated to do, that it really is the right thing to do, at least for the, only for the use variance. I'm not suggesting for the whole development. That's coming down the road. That, we'll try to let Neil earn some of his money here when that, when that comes up at, at that time. Um, so, uh, having said that, uh, we truly believe that you can't get a finer, a finer business establishment than Family Express. As I said before, not just locally owned, locally founded in northwest Indiana and in Lake County. And that means something. That means a lot. And I think under all the circumstances, it would be appropriate to say, hey, this time the BZA might have slipped up a little bit on this one. We think it's the right thing to do for a use variance. Then let them prove what can be done in terms of issues that arise during the planning process. I know that there has been some, uh, the town staff has some ideas about potential traffic improvements. We're all for it. We're willing to work with them. We're willing to be involved and be there right with them. So, for all those reasons, it is our belief that, um, the, uh, uh, the council should act in your legislative capacity and, um, overturn the BZA and approve the use variance. And, um, thank you very much for your time. And we're here to answer any questions you may have, whether it's me or the people that really know what they're talking about.
Stay up there, Jim.
Council members, question?
Got a few, couple of questions. So, Jim, yeah, I think in terms of, you know, traffic issues, I would trust our Plan Commission to address those and make those recommendations. And it, there is a process. There absolutely is a process, and tonight we are talking about the variance use. So, let's focus on the mechanics of that. So, I was at the BZA meeting. I saw the presentation. One thing that was lacking that I didn't hear, there's five key elements, right, of a variance. Uh, that includes...
Yes.
Demonstrating a hardship, right? Just running through them, uh, the unique property characteristics of this development, having minimal impact, um, on the neighborhood, another component of it, uh, and that there's no alternate solution to, you know, this business going to where you want to go. And then lastly, the public interest considerations, which I think we've heard. So, what I'd like to hear from you, Jim, to address these key elements of the mechanics of a variance, especially on the hardship side, which I didn't hear communicated that night at the BZA.
Okay. Um, well, I, I felt that we addressed all of them. We might not have said, hey, this is the hardship, or this is the orderly development, or this is, but in terms of the hardship, as, as you probably know from sitting up there, as, as those of us in the legal profession know, Dave and I know, it's always the toughest element to prove, because it's the hardship, the hard, the statute talks about the hardship of the property itself, the use of the, you know, the property itself. It doesn't talk about the hardship of... It doesn't talk about the hardship of, if there's financial hardship, or if there's other economic factors or other types of factors that go into it. It's a matter of the use of the property. In this, with this, not in, with this particular development, we believe that the hardship is satisfied, maybe I'll use a different term, the practical difficulties, because that's also an interchangeable term in the statute. The practical difficulties, if you take a look at that parcel of property, it's very uniquely shaped and challenged. It's not an easy site at all to develop for anybody. It's, I think it's about, what, six, a little over six acres, I think? It's a little over six acres. And the nature of the property itself, put aside the building in the back that would be gone if we do it, but you've got the bike path back there, you've got some, not wetlands, but some low areas. So it's very challenging to develop, very difficult to develop. But on the other hand, for this business, for this client, it is the perfect location. So it works a hardship on them to try to make that property work, one, but it also is a hardship in the sense that they would have to look long, hard, and far to find a better location and a better community in which to locate. And so I think from that perspective, that satisfies the requirement.
Thank you. Any other council members?
I have some questions if it's my turn.
Yes, it is.
So I'll just respond to the hardship issue, Jim. It sounds like you're telling the council that there's a hardship on Family Express as far as how they can develop this property and hardship to find a more perfect location. Those are hardships on the petitioner, not related to the property itself and the difficulty in finding a developer or a business to go into that property. There are lots of uses for that property that fall within the overlay district restrictions that can easily go into that property. The overlay district was adopted by the Plan Commission. If it's in conflict with the zoning, that was because there were things that they wanted to restrict. They wanted to take away the freedom of just simply putting those businesses in there, and there's a reason for that. And I wasn't part of that. We have not changed it. It is the law of this town, and so I guess I'm looking for a little bit further clarification on what is the hardship that actually relates to this property, not to the petitioner's.
Okay. All right. Okay, thanks, Caleb. Let me explain something this way. The reason that we have to get a use variance is because you have a zoning, an overlay district that says you need a use variance for an automobile service station. And it was the determination of staff, and I have no quarrel with it, it was determination of staff, that that, what we do, what Family Express does, meets the definition of an automobile service station. I would say it doesn't, not at all. Not in the customary term, not in the term as it was used years ago when cars were actually serviced at a service station. This is not a service station. It's a convenience store that does happen to have gasoline pumps, but they don't service, provide any automotive, they don't change tires, they don't put in transmission fluid, they don't clean your windows, they don't change windshield wipers, they don't do any of that. But because you have an ordinance that says that, and because it's been interpreted as that, we find ourselves here. And when, in fact, in my opinion, I don't necessarily think we need to be here under that definition.
Any other questions? Council members?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would like to address one of the other criteria that I think wasn't addressed at the BZA meeting, which I also attended and listened to, that was brought up. And you've called it speculative, you've called it a number of different things, but traffic and safety concerns are legit. This intersection, this property in and of itself, and the proposed concept that you have presented to the BZA and to the council is to retain the eastern building, the eastern parts of the building as they are, add a canopy with pumps on the east side of that building, and then add a through lane or driveway or whatever you want to call it to get around on the east side and then on the north side of the building over to the track and to the new businesses that you guys are planning to put in on the west side of the building. My concerns with these things, and I think legitimately, safety concerns, public health and safety concerns. People are going to be driving around this property at speeds that, you know, may or may not be appropriate. You can't always control those things. It's a very narrow pathway on that northeast side of the building between the lot line and the building. There was no proposal on how to deal with that sort of traffic and safety concern. The concerns with safety and traffic on Klein and US 30, that intersection, that roadway is difficult. And I think that the concept that you've proposed does not allow for any expansion of that road. If you put your tanks and you put parking along that east side and there's additional right-of-way needed, that's not going to be workable. It doesn't appear to me that you guys have any room to shrink that system down. And I think that, I appreciate, this is just a use variance, but when you're presenting things that are challenging the criteria and not in the BZA's opinion, you didn't satisfy your burden of proof to say that this development is going to be safe. This development is not going to create a hazardous condition for people traveling on the roads and people coming onto the property and driving around or walking around and trying to get through. And I realize it's not a fully vetted Plan Commission process, you know, plan, but you are coming in asking for this use and not addressing any of those issues for the BZA and not again here tonight. And I'm concerned with that, and I think that that is a failure if you don't address those things.
Okay. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, hang on a second. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I'm going to have Pete speak in a minute. I just want to make, I just want to make it clear, you're making my case for me, Caleb, because we have to, there is absolutely no burden on us, you said we didn't meet the burden of proof, there's no burden on us to begin to prove each and every traffic item that has to be addressed, or engineering a traffic that has to be addressed, or any other aspect of it. It is a concept and it is a use variance to be able to do what is done, as everybody's pointed out, up and down 30, only at a higher end, at a higher level, making more money and creating more real estate taxes. That's all we're asking. We want to use variance, just like Circle K, just like Speedway. I'm not saying they had to get them. I'm just saying, all we're doing is wanting to do and do it better, because Family Express does it better, we want to do it better than they do. And there was no, I would just point out at the BZA meeting, and that's the problem that we have with this. Nobody is saying, okay, what you really should do is, you should really engineer it so that you can create a, some access road or something. That isn't what it's for. That's what the Plan Commission is for. We're there to say, look, we think this is a good use. This is a use that's up and down US 30, no different than uses across the street, kitty corner, three blocks away, no different. Yeah, does it have challenges? I agree with you. It has challenges on the site, but those challenges, I mean, you know, engineers, you know, Neil can do anything, you know? That's what engineers are for, and that's what consultants are for, is to develop. And if it can be, then it can. If it can't, then it won't be. But I think that's important to know, and I know Pete wanted to say one thing. Pete, you want to come on up here?
Pete Andreau, I'm the, I'm sorry. I'm with Family Express, VP of Development. And Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to address, without getting too much into the weeds, I think I just reiterated what Mr. James was talking about. The items that you spoke specifically about are things that can be worked out during the process as we progress the project, should we be awarded the variance. You mentioned about the tanks. Certainly those tanks could be located somewhere else on the site. You mentioned about that access on the south side of the building. Certainly that could be eliminated and still have the access off of the north street. Family Express has been, this year we'll be celebrating our 50th year, and we're very proud of our safety culture. Safety is our number one priority at all times. We don't take that very lightly. That's very serious. So we look at all that. This is a conceptual plan. They would be further developed and refined as we progress through the various organizations. I could get into all the little details about moving tanks and the locations, but what was said earlier, we're not creating additional traffic, we're actually helping the traffic. We're pulling people off, say, the eastbound traffic on 30, bringing them through our site, and if they have to go further south on Klein, they eliminate that intersection. So actually, you're taking stress out of the intersection, should that be a customer that comes through our building and then go south. Again, the entrance, we're further south, I get it, I hear everybody, traffic, right? I mean, that's part of the reason we're here, because of the traffic, but we certainly don't want to create any hazards there. And I think our plan and our strategy is not going to be hazardous, and we're willing to work with all the departments here to ensure that safety is paramount and priority number one.
Thank you. My biggest concern, and I just, I have a difficult time with this, the Plan Commission process is not a public hearing process. And so when there are negotiations, so to speak, give and take, it's between Family Express and the Plan Commission alone. The public's comment is no longer involved. The town council's involvement is gone. That entire process is done outside of this. And so when you come to us, me as a town council member, and you present a concept that creates concern for me, I have to address it, even though you say it's just the use, it's just the use. Well, it's not just the use, because there are five criteria that are laid out in the statute that says when we can grant a zoning use variance, a use variance. And if you don't address those things, one of them being public health and safety, which I believe would be traffic, that's my concern. And so I hate to just defer this to the Plan Commission process and say, yeah, they'll take care of it. I don't know. And it never comes back to us. It never comes back to the public. So I'm concerned about it. What I'd love to see is you guys present a new concept that shows more right-of-way being designated to the town so that the intersection can be improved. I'd love to see a concept where there's enough room on that northeast corner, and I'd be 100% in favor of redeveloping this corner. I'm not excited about a gas station, but I think it's fine. I want this corner redeveloped. I want there to be investment into the community. I want property tax improvement. I think it's great. But I also don't want to approve the use when I have safety concerns.
And we'd gladly listen to them if that's a concern about right-of-way access. We could certainly have options during the design process. We could move things around on our property. We have some flexibility on that. We need to work together. We haven't had that discussion, because this is early on. We understand the traffic is an existing situation. No matter who goes in there, you're going to have that concern. You're going to have the same discussion whoever goes there. If it's not Family Express, it could be some other approved use that could potentially have more traffic than we would. So the issue is existing. There are issues. We're willing to work with all the departments. We're willing to move some kits and parts on our site, but we just need to get to that point where we can actually address those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Schmet.
I was at the BZA meeting where the petitioner presented their overall plan, seeking the variance to have a fuel service station on Route 30. I personally was quite impressed with the development. But I do know we are here tonight only to rule on the variance to allow the six sets of gas pumps at a fuel station convenience store. Due to our ordinance, we have on the Route 30 and Route 41 overlay districts. I thought the layout of the project was very good, and I also feel that 75% of the vehicles that's going to go into this development is going to be coming off of Route 30, on eastbound, on Route 30. The huge, and that has a huge entrance that is there already. I also feel that the northeast corner of that property is very ideal to have six sets of gas pumps. We're not talking about 20 sets of gas pumps here, we're talking about six sets of gas pumps with a canopy. I also know that traffic is a very big concern on Klein Avenue entrances and the road design itself. Those are issues that would be worked out at the Planning Commission, and I respect Councilman Johnson's, all of his comments, but I still believe that I have confidence in my Planning Commission to sit down with this developer and work all these plans out. Our Planning Commission's very good, and if they're not happy with what is settled or what is discussed or what is worked out, then they're going to vote against it. They're going to vote against the project. And so that's the way that works out. The gas park and the convenience store and the food store are just a small percentage of the development, like Mr. Weiser said. It's like 18% of the whole development. If you drive down Route 40 and Route 31 at any given time, and believe me, I'm out there in Sherrville every single day on Route 30 and 41, what is the most cars that you ever see at any of our convenience store gas stations at a time? Maybe six or eight cars at the pumps at a time, at the most? That's not a lot, that's not a lot of vehicles. As I see, as I see it, this is a pretty low-key development. Family Express, possible medical center, medical office, maybe other offices, maybe a small retail. This will be a lot better development for our town than what could go there, particularly large box stores. And it's also a $20 million investment in our town, and in one of our most prominent intersections. It's an area that is also in our TIF district to help financially for our Iliana project. This also is a prime spot at our, for our bike trails and a potential area to sit, have a sandwich, have a drink, and that would be great. They possibly could even put a bike rack on the west side, over on the bike trail side, and also maybe storage for people like, for bikes. Mr. Menard brought up a good point at the BZA meeting, and he spoke briefly about it tonight. Those are all pluses that this development would bring to our bike trail system. And that intersection on our bike trails is in the middle of our bike trail system here in Sherrville. our bike trail system here in Sherrville. Therefore, Mr. President, I would move to, with a motion, to approve the border zoning case 25-1-1, to allow the gas station pumps and to continue this work that the developer will have to do at the Planning Commission level. This is a perfect development to get that Klein Avenue road situation updated and approved in that area. We've been wanting to do that for a long time, and I have confidence that our Planning Commission can work with this developer to get the road improvements done that's needed. So I move to approve the item on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The law requires, under case law, the necessity of findings of fact that accompany a motion to approve or deny a variance. So we need to have some justification, Tom. You've read, you've read a statement, for example, but we need to have that for the record. If you want to incorporate your comments from, you know, your talking just now, that would be fine.
I'd be glad to incorporate my, my thoughts in my motion.
There needs to be something.
Pardon?
There needs to be something.
Okay. You amend that second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have amended on first and the second. Are there any other questions? Anybody have any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Yes, roll call for this item here. This is item number G.
Yes.
For border zoning case 25-1-S1. Mr. Johnson?
I'm still, no, sorry.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Motion carries four, one.
Four, one, okay. Under H, item H, consider the acceptance of contract between the Town of Sherrville and Burke Costanza and Carberry LLP Attorneys at Law. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a yearly contract between Burke Costanza and Carberry. They represent our Board of Safety, our Park Board, Plan Commission, and BZA.
Okay. Pleasure to the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero. Item L is to consider approval of engagement letter between LWG and the Town of Sherrville for our water rate study. This is from the Water Work Board Agenda, so I'm just looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That's, that's letter I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just for the record.
Oh, letter I, okay. Thank you, Tom. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those, roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero. J is consider approval of engagement letter between LWG and the Town of Sherrville for municipality advisory, advisatory service from redevelopment commission agenda. Pleasure to the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Troxel, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero. Appointment for the Fire Department Merit Commission Attorney.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I move to approve Alfredo Estrada and staff from the law firm of Burke Costanza and Carberry to be the attorney for the Fire Department Merit Commission. They also are our attorney for the Safety Board, and I feel this commission will go hand-in-hand with the Safety Board.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero. Under L, one appointment by the Town Council President for the Fire Department Merit Commission must be a Republican, term ends December 31 of 2026. My pick was Roger Forkowitz.
Motion to approve? No, there's no motion for this.
No, no motion.
Right.
Just FYI.
Yes.
Also, one appointment by the Town Council President for the Fire Department Merit Commission, Democrat, term ending December 31, 2028, is David Chorosi. Under N, now we have one appointment by the Town Council for the Fire Department Merit Commission. D, term ending in December 31 of 2026.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to appoint Mr. Tom Falk to the Fire Department Merit Commission with the term ending on December 31 of 2026.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero. Under O, item O, award bid for community crossing grant project 2024-2, Burst Street Improvement. Neil?
Mr. President, we have the bid award for the Burst Street Reconstruction Project, which is the reconstruction of Burst Street from just north of US 30 to just south of Joliet Street near the bike trail, and including water main replacement. We opened bids on February 10 of this week. We had five bidders, and the recommendation for the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder would be to M&amp;J Underground in the amount of $2,418,020.50. Are there any questions?
Council members, any questions?
Nope.
We did check out their references. They are partnered with local unions, and everything was in order in terms of their bid and moving forward to be compliant with the town's responsible bidders ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Pleasure to the board.
That was my question. Thank you, Neil.
Thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Real quick, Neil, can you let the public know what, or maybe Chad, what that project would consist of?
Yeah, that is the complete roadway reconstruction from just north of US 30, where the last project left off, to just south of the bike trail, south of Joliet Street. Complete water main reconstruction and replacement, and additional storm sewer, no sanitary sewer, but we'll be working on some accessibility in terms of the area of 75th Avenue. A bike trail on the east side of the road, north of US 30, to connect with 75th Avenue into Foxwood.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions, members?
No.
I move to approve, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Troxel?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero. Item P, award bid for road materials. Chad?
Good evening. I'm looking for your approval for the 2025 contract for road materials, which consists of asphalt paving services and stone gravel and stone, stone and gravel, and blacktop for the Public Works Department. Bid opening was February 7. It was publicized in the newspapers in January, and there was two bids for the asphalt paving services portion of the contract, and there was four bids for the road material services, which was the stone gravel, black dirt, and sand. The lowest and most responsive bidder for the asphalt paving services portion was Milestone Contractors, Inc., and for the stone, sand, black dirt, the lowest and most responsible bidder was B&amp;D Sewer Company. Looking for your recommendation to approve these for the year.
Okay. Motion to approve? We have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Q, consider acceptance of utility reimbursement agreement between Enterprise Pipeline Company and the Town of Sherrville in the amount of $62,160. This is Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Andy?
Yes, this is similar to all the other utility reimbursement agreements we've done for this corridor. This is for Enterprise Pipeline, located near Public Works and the wastewater treatment plant, for activities associated with Kennedy Avenue Project.
Thank you. Pleasure to the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero. Item R is consider donation request of $50,000 to the Lake County Parks Department to purchase 10 acres from Harvest Ridge Church property at the southeast corner of Austin Avenue and 77th Avenue for future connection to the county park. Is Craig here?
Yeah, I'll just say a few words, Rob, first.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Before Craig speaks. So this is consistent with the donation that we provided a few years ago for the parcel east of this, which is shown on the map. We anticipate a connection to the Pennsy Trail in the future, which would tie into this property. As part of this donation, the county will provide right-of-way for any future intersection improvements or, you know, connection to the bike path at the corner of 77th and Austin. And of course, Mr. Zanstra's here tonight to give us a brief explanation of such. Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. Yeah, Craig Zanstra with Lake County Parks and Recreation Department. Quick overview for you. We approached the church after we acquired the Saros Track, and we went ahead and got a yellow book appraisal, the park board did, and then also the church paid for one as well, which came up with the average purchase price of $209,500. After that, we went ahead and applied to Lake Michigan Coastal Program for federal funds through National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. So we got approved there for $105,000 about, and then also Indiana DNR threw their state parks out to Recreation Division, and the President Benjamin Harrison Conservation Trust, basically the sale of environmental plates in the state. They put in about $45,000, and we also have an application in front of Little Canet River Basin Development Commission. So Little Cal Funds, license plate funds, and then also potentially Town of Sherrville funds would match the federal funds to make the project whole as far as the acquisition. We're excited about it. I think this, this corner here at 77th and Austin, I think it's got the best view in the Town of Sherrville, looking towards the southeast, you know, and that view's never going to change. You've got a wetland there, and then it rises up to the oak hickory woods there in the middle of the site and the high ground, and then also if you look at the Town of Sherrville Comprehensive Plan, this parcel is zoned as open space, so I think we're following through with what the comp plan says. And then also, it's a willing seller. The church wants to see it open space since they can't develop a church in that property. And then also, we've got some other willing sellers around this site. We were going to concentrate a little bit more on starting the development, but then we had some sellers around this area that have popped up, and so we've made some new acquisitions recently, and so originally, we thought the site might be 150-acre site top someday. Looks like the site could be about 200 acres, so pretty exciting, and I think having more open space in this area is really good, and it kind of follows the, kind of an area of open space from, you know, the Speedway property, to the Baldwin Farm, to Chapelon Cemetery, to this property, even back to Lake Hills Park over off 85th. So I think you've got kind of a corridor of open space through there, which is pretty unique in this part of the county, and then also, you know, the potential here for trails across this property from 85th and Klein up to 77th and Austin could give some great recreational opportunities, and then also potential stormwater benefits as well with the big wetland complex in this corner, which some of this property does deserve some of the wetlands there as well, so.
Thank you. Any questions, members? One question.
Go ahead.
Greg, would you be okay with, Greg, with the condition of the right-of-way granting that to the Town of Sherrville for future intersection improvements and future trail extensions?
Yes, I think that fits in well with the site, and, you know, at some point, once the acquisition goes through, which we're scheduled to close in the beginning of March, we'll go ahead, and when we put conservation easement on the property, usually when you get federal funds, also state conservation funds, you have to put a conservation easement on the property, and so we can keep that portion of the property out of the conservation easement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to approve with the condition that the right-of-way be granted for future intersection and trail connections.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Letter S, consider acceptance of donations for $3,182.50. Mr. Troxel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. These donations were accepted in the month of January. A donation fund to the town hall offices. We received an in-kind donation of $45 from Bob Delco B&amp;D Sewer, three boxes of Fanny May candy. Also, another in-kind contribution from Valerie De Leon, Girl Scouts of Greater Chicago and Northwest Indiana, donated 11 boxes of Girl Scout cookies. To the donation fund to the animal control, anonymous dog treats and broth, in-kind $25. Jonas donated dog food and cat wet food, a value in-kind of $45. Anoniously, we received blankets, that in-kind value was $100. Maggie donated three 38-pound bags of blue dog food, dry, that in-kind value was $200. Maggie also donated two 38-pound bags of dog food, that value was $140. Anoniously, we received three medium Kong's for dogs, that in-kind value was 40. And anonymously, also received Miss Laine's blankets, that in-kind value is $30. And Thomas Ruska donated one dozen paper towel rolls, large box, dog biscuits, and Pine-Sol, that in-kind value was $45. Total value for the animal controls was $625. The police department received a donation from Walmart, 18 Rise and Roll Donuts, and a Dunkin' Box of Joe, that in-kind value is $62.50. The police equipment fund received a donation from Jeff Witstrand of $200, and AES Restaurant Foundation/Arby's donated $550 to the police equipment fund. Their total value is of donations they received for the police equipment is $750. The canine fund from Jeff Witstrand donated $200 to the canine donations. The Project Lifesaver, Logan's Love, donated $1,000 to Project Lifesaver. And to the VIPS program, Van Gogh Incorporated, donated $400 to that program. In recapping, total in-kind donations received in the month of January, $832.50. Total monetary donations received, $2,350. Our grand total received for the month of January, $3,182.50.
Pleasure to the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, Mr. Troxel, roll call?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Getzloff?
Yes, motion carries five, zero.
At this time, I will take any comments from the floor. Any comments from the floor?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before you close, can I?
Yes.
I want to apologize for lack of clarity on the Board of Stormwater Management membership. Indiana Code 8-1.5 prescribes the membership, and your membership is correct. Distracted when I received the question, and, but I want to make sure on the record you know, and Caleb, that would apply to you also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more thing, too, Mr. President.
Yes.
So Attorney Oshin, to clarify, the ordinances for the rezones, did they not have to be approved before adopted, or since its first reading, or? approved before adopted, or since its first reading, or?
No, there's only a single reading of a zone change ordinance under the law.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no comments from the floor, we'll close the floor. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and be safe tonight.